It is six thirty, so I will call the school committee meeting of October twenty third, two thousand and twenty-three to order. And just, I will further announce that we are, that this meeting is being broadcast live on CTSB, if you're watching us from CTSB, you already know that. Education Channel thirteen oh two, and will be rebroadcast on CTSB. You can check their website for schedule. And now I'll have hearing of visitors. Do we have any visitors or comments? Okay, great. And I don't have any correspondence to share, and so we now have the minutes from October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If anybody has any comment, or if I could hear a motion, please.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the minutes of October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Have a second?
The second was Kim's. Okay, perfect. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, hey there. Okay, so I think we'll just turn it over to you, Dr. Collins, for the superintendent's report.
All right.
Thank you.
Highlights and recognitions. The Berkshire Eagle has a Teacher of the Month program, and our own Ashley Sherman has been nominated to be a teacher. It's nomination, but still very, very exciting. We're very proud of her. The Morris had three, did three emergency drills this morning. They did a lockdown drill, followed by a fire drill, followed by a relocation drill. I counted eight cruisers. There was an ambulance, the police chief was there, the fire chief was there, there were state trooper there, police from other surrounding towns. They did an outstanding job. I have been, I've been either involved in or watching drills for most of my career, and I've never seen one go so well, so quickly. They did with such precision. They were, they were, they were quiet when they needed to be quiet, they filed out of the building in three minutes. Like, this is pretty impressive stuff to empty a whole building. And then, and then the relocation piece, they, they, they walked up the hill to BU, were all accounted for, and walked back. They did all of this in about an hour. It was, it was very impressive to watch, and to see all of the support from, from the Fire Department and Police Department. Really very impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, the principals, the principals and I have started the, started the climate survey questions. Thank you to folks who contributed to that. I expect that by the end of this week, we should have our draft, we should have our draft questions. I will share them in my update to you. But we're, we're moving nicely, starting with the end in mind of what we're hoping to get out of them. I think that we're, we're doing well with the intentionality on those. We're going to start with students, so students will be the first ones. A message will go out to families and staff to explain exactly what we're doing, and then we will subsequently have a survey for families and staff. But again, look for it in your, your update.
And some, some people have already given you some input.
Yes.
I think we will report during our TLC, but we had a chance to discuss a couple things in general as you pull that together.
Yes, yep, yep.
Thank you for those of you that gave some input.
Thank you. All right. So next up is the field trip request.
Hi there.
Hi, I'm Alexa Bermudas, one of the art teachers at the Middleland High School, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about the importance for our students in the visual arts to engage with authentic works of art. We are proposing a trip on November thirtieth to the Metropolitan Museum of Art and the Cooper Hewitt Design Museum with upperclassmen students who have continued their art education into upper-level courses, including design, studio art, two D art, three D art, advanced photography, and APR and design. While the works of art on view align with the curriculum taught in these courses, I would like to mention other reasons this trip is important to the students of Lennox. While I could talk to you at length about how an education rich in the visual arts increases students' critical thinking, fine motor skills, and overall academic performance, or why Harvard Medical students are required to take courses in visual arts, engaging with works of art at the Metropolitan, or I'm sorry, the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston, I think it's equally important that we focus on art for art's sake. Researcher J. P. Green from the University of Arkansas comments on the experience of viewing works of art through field trips, as students are able to look through a window into a broader world filled with different people and ideas. I would argue that in a small community such as Lennox, it is our responsibility as educators to expose our students to a larger world, push them to explore other perspectives, and empathize with those of another experience. Whether viewing a Diane Arbus photograph or dissecting the narrative on a piece of pottery by Roberta Lugo, students are shifting their perspective to a different place, time, or experience. And with that, we are teaching them empathy, intrigue, passion, struggle, awareness, injustice, equity, privilege, and humanity. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
What, how many students? So where in the Metropolitan Museum of Art are you going to focus, given that it's, you know?
Well, so a lot of these students, they're upperclassmen, so they've taken Foundations of Art, where we talk about Impressionist paintings and a lot of the classical pieces. I'm excited for the Afrofuturistic room with the pottery of Roberta Lugo. We're starting a three D art course shortly, so that's someone that I use in my curriculum. But, yeah.
Yeah, there's so many things that we can go through.
Yeah, I mean, the, what they've learned between Foundations of Art and all of these courses, there's, there's so many that they're going to be able to see in real life.
Is Eddie Galloway that's here? I'm sorry, I'm looking at, at your, so you said upperclass people?
Yeah.
So juniors, seniors, just seniors?
Juniors and seniors who-
So the, in your more advanced placement art classes?
Not necessarily advanced placement, but they've shown kind of a dedication to the arts by taking three courses by the end of this year.
Okay, great.
Throughout their education.
Great, thank you. Anybody else with questions, comments?
I think the students are fortunate to have someone that's so passionate about it. That's great.
Thank you. What I wrote, I feel strongly about, so.
There's no question that when you see the students' art exhibits that are up around, and thank you for making them accessible to the public, that the work with students are very talented, and they have an opportunity to express themselves in multiple ways. And I think, you know, history at Lennox is that the art wing is kind of a space that students really enjoy being in, not that they don't enjoy many other spaces too, but I thank you for that. You know, I think your, your, your passion, as well as your dedication to offering a wide variety with a small number of students, I think, again, is challenging. Sometimes in a larger school, they have more people to do the work, so thank you for that as well. Appreciate it. Anybody else, comments or a motion?
I just did want to say that I, I got permission from the town manager, if you're looking for more display space, the common space out here in the town hall is available.
Great.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the field trip request as presented by Alexa for, I'm sorry, November.
Vermudas.
November. All second.
And anyone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that leaves us with a bunch of time. Thank you so much. You both, appreciate it. I'm hoping for good weather that day.
Yep.
I hope we miss the wind. What is going on with my computer? Okay, so we are now in the-
Budget timeline?
I'm sorry, did you, did you have anything else? You actually have other stuff. I jumped ahead, oh no.
No, no, we're right, yeah, budget, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so in your packet is the, is the updated budget timeline. Melissa and I worked on the flow and timing to make it, make as much sense as it could, and have everybody have enough time to make sure that we go through this with intentionality and planning.
Anybody on this have any questions, comments, suggestions? Basically, you've already started, because October twentieth, you sent the templates out.
We changed the, I'm trying to change the format a little bit, not in the final presentation, but in what the principals work with, so it's taking me a little bit longer, but I will have it out to the principals.
Oh, okay. I didn't, it was not a suggestion, it's just that it indicated that October twentieth-
Yes, I have.
Yeah, no, no, that's good, and certainly, I think, getting it out in a way that is workable for all of you makes the most sense, so yeah.
How are you changing?
Instead of giving them the document that you see that has the descriptions on the right-hand side, the historical expenditures, and the account numbers, they're getting an Excel sheet, one sheet split the same way by department for their expenses, but I've asked them to include if they have more than one expense that applies to the account number, to actually have additional lines, so that they have more space to put in a narrative about what the expense is for. It will help me, and I think when we get past approval, and I'm working in the budget next year, I can see exactly what was requested, what was approved, and what it was for.
So is it bringing it down to a granular level, then, or?
You might say that, because it is going to be, so say they want, I don't know, two thousand for textbooks. I would request that if a thousand were for this, this course-
Yeah.
-that's split out, and then a thousand, or however they split out the balance, for the expenditures that they're planning on spending it on. Right now, it's grouped together, and really, we talk about the major purchases-
Okay.
-but I really do need to see what exactly they're looking to purchase next year. It helps better when I'm in the year that has been approved, like this year, so I refer back to the budget all the time.
So that way you'll know, if something comes up, let's say textbooks, and it was for X, Y, Z, but then you'll know that if you see the textbook, it's actually for X, Y, Z, and not for A, B, C?
Right. And it will also allow to make sure that they're utilizing the right accounting.
Are there sub-accounts, then, within that accounting? Like, is it, would there be a sub-account for, you know, textbooks, X, Y, Z, or if it applies to math, or so?
No, in our accounting system, it'll all be one number, but the breakout will be on the sheets that they're going to prepare for me.
Okay.
Now, or for us, now.
Okay. Do you see any future application, then, for it in, in terms of going forward? Aside from, like, in accounting, but in, in terms of being able to utilize that information in some way?
Yes, otherwise I wouldn't ask for them to do it.
No, 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 but I mean, not strictly for an accounting point of view, but for kind of tracking changes, or utilization of different departments, of different things?
Yeah, so what it'll show me is that research was done, it's going to cost this, and now we get a bulk number, and we're going to buy this, 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 and this. They thought this would cost two thousand, and it actually costs four, so it, it will give us an idea of exactly what it is that they're anticipating spending on certain items, or services.
Okay.
And it's really just, you know, I'll handle the salary and of the budget, it's just for anything from services, supplies, professional development, and travel is what the principals put together for us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I'd, I'd like to commend Melissa. When I came in, I sort of put out the challenge of, hey, just because we've always done things this way doesn't mean it's the way that we have to do it moving forward. Take a look at some of the ways that we do things, and see if there are reasons why we're doing things a different way would be better, and she's taken that to heart. She's done, she's done a really nice, a really nice job of that, and of communicating it to Randy, Brian, Brenda, and Jeremiah. And a lot of, my experience has been, not to generalize, but a number of business folks, often very member-centric, and with Melissa, we can talk vision and where we want to go, and, and how the budget is, goes hand in hand with what we want to accomplish programmatically, and she gets that. It's really good.
I have a question, just never been through this process before. I know when I, when I, when I'm looking at a budget for the next school year, the next upcoming budget, do we have access to, or we will be, will we be given the budget that we're currently in, as far as, you know, what was earmarked and what has actually been expended? I like to kind of look at those numbers to see, you know, the requests from last year that was in there, but what's actually been expended, or what we have?
I'm going to the mic. I'm sorry. Yes, when, if you, you can go online and see this year's budget, and the document that we use, and it does have its year-to-date expenditures for the current budget, which would have been FY twenty-two for, or twenty-three for that budget. Yes, twenty-three for that budget.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you.
And I also have previous years in there, too.
Okay. No, that's helpful, thank you.
You know, in the past, we've had questions about documentation for procedures and whatnot, and I know there's been an effort to document how we, how we do things. It, do we, is there a documented process for the budget process itself?
The complete budget process?
Well, the- Well, that and/or, you know, the steps involved.
So when I send this, and it'll be an electronic file that I send them, I will also have steps that need to be completed on there for their inputs. You could call that documented, it's not formalized, but-
Right, right, right. And is what you do documented in any way?
To a degree, yes, but not completely.
Okay, okay.
And I can certainly work on that.
Just a question.
No, we do have it. I mean, and that, that document that you have in front of you does give you the timeline, and that pretty much is the process, and the deadlines that we try to meet and want to meet have to meet. So that gives us what we need to do next. So the next person coming in will have that document as well, and be able to see how we did it.
We'll begin to get a little bit more detail on that at our next meeting on the thirteenth, because that's our forecast discussion, right?
Yes.
Which is really just sort of where we think we are as we dig in a little deeper. Right, correct.
And I hope to have, I spoke with Orin, I hope to have the, all the salaries moved into the next year, so we can see what just a basic rollover costs the district, because there are a lot of new employees this year in the district, so it should be somewhat, at least in my estimation, favorable than in past years, because we've, you know, we've replaced retiring teachers with, with newer teachers.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
My last item is the staffing update. I'm pleased to announce that we have a permanent building sub who's a certified retired teacher for the Morris School, Janet Warner, and that the high school has a admin assistant to the principal-
Oh, yay.
Kate Holt, yes, we're very excited. And we are right on the cusp of announcing a long-term biology substitute to cover.
Okay.
So we're, we're doing very well there. We're still looking for a permanent building sub at the Middle High School.
I think Morris is blessed to have Janet Warner, that's a solid hire. Thirty years, really, she's, she's, she's going to be a great addition down there.
So her first day was today, and she took part in the three emergency drills and did an outstanding job, yeah.
She's wonderful, the students are very well respected by the past peers.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yes, we're very pleased.
Nice. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think our next item, then, is the revised, I'm just pulling it up on my thing, it's the revised substitute policy. I don't know who wants to give us, and give us the update on that. I think there was a little bit of working on HR. Orin, do you want to give that to us? Okay, thank you.
So the substitute policy covers our set rates for all of the different substitute positions. One of those, that is sort of standalone, separate from a teacher sub, is if we need a substitute nurse in one of the buildings. We had either one or two years ago raised that per diem from one twenty-five up to one fifty. At the time, we'd looked at what other districts in the county were doing, and somewhere as high as one seventy-five, but we figured, let's try one fifty first, essentially, and we can always come back, and based on feedback from our nurses, and what remains of very tight and competitive nursing labor market, we are coming back and saying we should go up to the one seventy-five. I think we would definitely want to give a much harder look at doing anything that went above what was in the band for the county and the area, but going to the top of what is established, I think, certainly in the HR meeting, we felt very good about, so. That is the recommended change. And then, I know you've mentioned one, just change in the way we indexed to minimum wage, or just the wording of that.
It was, no, no, no change to the practice at all, it was, it was just making it, if, if anyone was to read it, to make it a little, just a little more intuitive, that's all, a couple of lines. I think Amy, Amy did the wordsmithing on that, and it's nice.
And so I guess this is just the first review, and we would actually vote on it next time, I assume?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's been the practice. I always wondered a little bit, and I apologize, I probably should have gone back and looked again, whether we're required to do that. It's a pretty small change, and so it feels sort of like, can we move to vote? But perhaps we have to, we have to delegate a date, because you've done that.
We actually discussed that issue in the governance meeting, and while it has been practiced, it is not a, you know, it doesn't have to be done, and, and, you know, there's an argument for some instances when it's not really necessary, or, or just delays things that have no reason to, really shouldn't be delayed also.
And I definitely think when we're doing some major substantive changes, like we might be doing in some of the other policies and things that are coming down as, as proposed or suggested policies, that might make more sense, but I, I see the advocacy of just getting this one done, not putting it back on the agenda, unless anybody has an objection to that, and if you don't have an objection to that, I would entertain a motion to approve. And, and thank you again for this work. I think trying to get appropriate staffing in our buildings, and make sure that we have the right qualified people wanting to come and work, and also being paid appropriately, is, you know, it's, it's a challenge right now, and I think, thank you, Orin, and the HR Subcommittee, and the others who are looking at how we try to make sure that we have who we need in the building, and nursing, the profession of nursing is in high demand, and so when we have great people in our buildings, we really depend on them, and we need to have somebody with us, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, well, then I, I would move that we accept the revised substitute policy GCG. A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now I'm going to move on to, and I apologize again in the sense that, well, I don't want to apologize, I just want to say, the planning purposes. So when we had our last retreat, I think we had a lot of conversation and some presentations from our ADL coordinator, Phil Fogelman, who's been working with our students and our faculty and staff, on our goal of creating safe and brave spaces in our schools, and what that looks like, and also to address some of the issues that we've been working on since our anti-bullying investigation report, I guess, a year, a year and a half ago or so, and in supporting your leadership and bringing on our leadership team for school spaces that are safe and inclusive, and that the students feel like they can learn, which I think is a very, very important and difficult priority. So it was your goal and mine to have our school committee engage in some of the conversations around that, so that we have a better understanding of how we're trying to use same terminology. I've heard numbers of you talk about that. I think, Kim, we've talked a lot about working with kids and having people on the same page about, you know, what kind of terminology we're talking about, and then also what it takes to create inclusive and safe spaces, and I really appreciate the work of the ADL, who is also working with our students and their peer groups on the No Place For Hate, which I think has been also important. So we did that, we had two retreat sessions to talk about it, and a chance to have some social time, which I think was helpful with new members and getting to know one another, and we left the last one talking about something that's really left over from last year in the governance policy, and I'm looking at Megan, because we had held aside a couple of policies around the issue of mission and vision, and, and goals in the general sense of, we have your goals, and we, we heard the student, the school improvement goals, but in a more general sense about how we want to move forward as a school committee. We had put that off last year, and as we were building our permanent leadership team, and I think with some good guidance and recommendations from our interim Jake, Dr. Everwine. So we decided that we would meet again and talk about that. And so I would like to schedule that. I have gotten some really good feedback from Liz LaFond, who had also worked with, had come to your governance committee, that she had done a facilitated training with Jake Everwine in the Farmington River Schools that went really, really well, and was focused in this way. And again, knowing that Burke Twelve is one of our partners, Jake Everwine already is very familiar with our school, I think this would be a great opportunity for us to dig in and do some of this work around mission, values, goals, vision, and so. I've reached out to Jake, he is a little busy today, some of you may be aware, as the consultant working on the Southern Berkshire merger decision, he's been pretty overwhelmed, so I'm hoping to get some dates back from him, and Liz said she could be pretty flexible, in which case then I'll send out a few options to our group, and try to get us on the calendar ASAP. I also acknowledge that some of what I've heard, and heard from Orin Cass, is to have priorities, to us to really be able to talk about our priorities. I feel like we've had a few conversations about priorities and goals relative to school improvement plan, and some of our brainstorming, but I think if we really focus specifically on an agenda item for that, and we have an opportunity then to bring that forward, I know I've done a similar thing at the TLC Subcommittee, that would be a good opportunity for us to have those feed into one another, and so I'm hoping to get that on the calendar pretty soon, and it, it will, we'll take a look as our meetings go forward as to whether it's an add-on, and I'll try not to overwhelm, like, do the same week or something, but really, right now, I'm waiting to hear back from Jake, and I just didn't want to bother him, because I know today's a big day.
Sure, yeah.
So that's my update on that.
Do we have a rough idea of when this will be taking place this year?
I mean, I would do it as soon as possible. I'm hoping before Thanksgiving break, if Jake's available, if we can be flexible, I know everybody's, we do have the conference happening, some of us are going to that on the Cape, so that also creates a block of time. Burke Twelve is also presenting at that and doing, I think, some of the visioning goals. Burke Twelve has been working on a type of visioning they do that's called Portrait of a Graduate, and that has had a lot of connection from different school districts about how do we really think about, similar to where you're talking about, that your survey is like, where do we want to be is one way to figure out where we, what kinds of things we need to put in place to get there, and I think that's a big visioning that Burke Twelve is doing, as well as a lot of conversations with districts in Berkshire County around core value issues, inclusivity, brave, safe spaces. There's a convening group that I've been going to of people talking about the- There's a convening group that I've been going to of people talking about the hate-based, identity-based issues that have been happening in a school across the county. That's a group that includes the District Attorney's Office and several other groups that are, and Burke 12 is leading that as well to talk about it.
I've been invited to attend the next session.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, it was really, it was a really good conversation. There were a lot of people there, and we went past agenda time, trying to think about how we connect across districts, you know, not just, you know, each town doing their own thinking about that.
So, I, I would like to comment on that.
Yeah, sure.
Because I, I kind of feel that as a place to start, we really, I, I think as a group, should be talking about what our priorities as a group are. And while core values, mission, vision, goals, I, I think of a lot of those, if they've come out of the governance Subcommittee, perhaps the government Subcommittee could readdress those, because that hasn't been on, you know, in the meeting we've had, not yet been on it. So, I think a little bit of background on it before we, perhaps from a Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee could then report to, to the overall Committee, could very well be, you know, in order. Because when I, when I look at those, I think of the strategic plan, and I think of all the work that went into the strategic plan, and I think that within that, a lot of these issues are perhaps covered. And, and so, in, in, so I, I think that in terms of working towards those, perhaps from an entire, from a full school committee standpoint, we, we could perhaps, not perhaps, I think from a full school committee standpoint, we should really, I, I, I think it's very, very important to know what the committee members' priorities are going forward. I, I would think that that is a more, you know, it's, it's, it's a more, it's a more important thing than, well, it's not important, but I think it's a more tangible thing, that we, that, that we know where everyone stands, and that if there are issues that can then be put into the Subcommittee for further exploration, and then report back to the overall school Committee, I, I think that that is, that is a number one priority. And, and, and I've lost my second thought on that. But, because I feel that, you know, the workshop, and a party's workshop, may give us tangible things to work on.
Right.
And, and, and so, if we, if we're talking about scheduling, I would absolutely put that as the first thing to schedule. I don't know if we need speakers so much as we need ourselves in a room and in a forum, you know, to bring our issues and concerns to the table, and, and, and then, you know, and then proceed from there.
Yeah, and I may have either misspoke, or, or is that, the part about the mission values was one of the, several of the, I forget, there was like two or three policies last year, that the recommendation of Liz LaFond was that you skip over those, and that we work on those when we have our new committee and our new leadership constituted. So, that was a specific, like, holdover, move that forward, and then we do that, because I believe that what we have, even as a mission statement and a value statement, even though we did a new strategic plan, we didn't address those. That came from ten more plus years ago, maybe 2010, when we had a consultant who worked with us to create all of that. And that was a big, a bigger strategic plan, multiple stakeholder meetings, a lot of, you know, visioning and things like that. And when we did this updated, most recent strategic plan, which I think we're now in maybe year four, or coming up on to the fifth year of, we did it sort of ourselves, not that there's anything wrong with that. We had a big group, a number of, I know Orin was part of it, I was part of it, so that we did it without, without consultant work, and we didn't address specifically the, sort of the mission, vision part of it. And that was, the thinking is that it was in the policy, and we would be moved forward. So, I just feel like it makes sense to pick that up, 'cause we, we have our leadership complement, and we're ready, I think, to talk about it. And as far as the priorities, again, I think we've, we've heard our administration, we've heard our superintendent, we've voted on those and approved those, and then I think in addition, then our own work makes sense. I agree with you. So, we'll, we'll get working on scheduling that. Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? And I'll give you, I'll give you options of dates, and I will also give you, you know, some thoughts about what, what we'd like you to, I mean, maybe people have already thought about it, and they know what they wanna bring forward, but for other people, I think again, and the Subcommittees, there's similar things happening of thinking about where you wanna dig in. We've been doing that on the TLC level, so.
Well, just one more question. I, I guess it'd be helpful if you could give, for me, what I'm struggling with is just the distinction between how we use these meetings, and how we would use the meeting that we're describing. It feels to me like we've had these dates on our calendar, including tonight for that matter, where it feels like we'll, we'll be coming to the end of the meeting shortly, where we could've been making progress on all of these things. And so, I guess I might not be thinking about that right, but what is the, is there more that we can be doing here, including tonight, or just looking ahead on the meetings that we already have on the calendar, as opposed to, or before we try to find an additional set of dates?
I mean, I suppose on any meeting, we can think about how we're using time and trying to use it wisely. I think sometimes we're really efficient, 'cause we're getting two things, and there's not a lot of discussion. Sometimes I've been at meetings where I'm surprised we end up with having like an hour-long discussion about something. So, I hear you. I think that's sort of a, a guest. Often, we also have our guests from our administrative team here. They each were conflicted and had something else they had to do tonight. So, when I think of this model of workshop versus this type of meeting, it's more of a, we're sitting around and we're having dialogue, as opposed to this agenda item, this agenda, this, this agenda. And that's where I think of in terms of workshop. This whole schedule for this year was created on a model of what we've done in the past, because, again, we had transition in leadership. I can, I would very much, as we work toward next year, think about trying to schedule us out where we have different types of workshop meetings in between. Many, many school committees do, they call it business meeting, and then they call it workshop. And a workshop might be, for example, we really wanna dig into understanding better how the school is, is dealing with a specific issue, or how you project. I'll give an example. At times, we've talked a lot about how is the middle school working or not working, and that might be an opportunity for you to come forward, bring someone in, we could talk about it, and be able to have a chance to really kinda dig in to understand what changes would look like. You can certainly do it in this format as well, but I think, you know, both, they're all public meetings, anyone can attend our meetings. I just think it's just a different format of working. And when I was attending leadership meeting this morning, excuse me, this summer, a lot of school committee, school committee leaders talked about how helpful they find that to be. So, I hear you, they've been laid out, and I think we will have some very, very busy meetings coming up. I think when we can do our work kind of efficiently and get through and not have surprises, it feels really good this year, because I think we've had some long meetings in the past where we didn't expect them to be like that. So, I hear you, and I wanna use everyone's time as efficiently as possible, and also create the format that I think will be helpful. So, thank you for that.
I just wanna add, you know, just my own thought. You know, when we spoke about this, it was really, how can we do exactly that in the most effective, efficient way possible, right? And so, it got brought up, that Liz LaFond often does these sorts of things, and Liz is familiar with our district. I think, you know, Liz is really good at making sure that we're staying on track, our conversations are productive conversations. Like Ronnie said, of, we could, we could do it in this format, but I think we'll just get a lot more out of having somebody sort of guide us through this process, as we, as we all kind of, you know, get to know each other and get to know what's important to one another.
So, I, I personally am a fan of workshop model. I like the workshop model. I do think that a lot more gets done. I understand that this is a, you know, a business-type meeting, and there's an agenda. The only thing that I would, as a new school committee member, would have appreciated, and maybe perhaps, you know, with new, new school committee members maybe coming in next year or the following year, I think what I would have appreciated is the priorities part. And while I understand Mr. Fogelman's, the importance of meeting with him, and us understanding what was going on in the schools, and, you know, so we were all on the same page, I like to be on the same page with all the schools. I understood the importance of that. I, I would have liked to have had an opportunity to sit down with, not old members, but past members, and the new members, to discuss what that looks like, priorities. I would have liked to have seen that perhaps, you know, before we got together, or at the very beginning of the year. That would've been helpful for me, and I'm only speaking for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the school committee members. But, and, and, and since then, I have been able to talk about my priorities at the TLC meeting, the Subcommittee meetings, and, you know, so I'm able to put that out there. But I just feel like, I kind of thought that that maybe would happen before we went, you know, full speed ahead here. So, I think the priorities piece in the future would be helpful, before everybody just sat down at the table as a new school committee member, and, you know, I would've liked to have seen that, like when, like the same timeframe as Mr. Fogelman spoke, or.
Right.
But again, I am a huge fan of the, of a workshop model. I, I, I support this 100%, but in the future, I think prioritizing and being able to talk to the other school committee members that were already on board, to see, you know, what, hey, what were you guys looking at, like, you know, that would've been really helpful for me before coming to this table.
One of the things I do wanna also address is that with a new leadership team coming in, Dr. Collins needs the time to get to know everybody and figure it out. So, I feel like if we were creating and brainstorming our priorities, separate and distinctly from our newly hired leader, and also having heard a lot of over the years, and going back to prior terms when I was on the school committee, and David, maybe you can address this, one of the fears, frustrations, concerns that were raised in our, even in our, in the, the group forums that were happening as we were searching for superintendent, was every time we get a new leader, we're getting a new set of priorities. Justin, we're trying to, and this is coming from like faculty and staff, we're finally getting into doing something that we've identified that's really important, now you're gonna bring in a new leader, and I think this came up in some of the interview meetings too, and you're gonna come in and shift all that. So, I, I feel sensitive to the idea of us setting out, yes, we're guiding our superintendent, we're asking him to, to manage and to maintain, he's our CEO of the school department, but if we started to give a lot of mixed messages around this, when he hasn't had a chance to really dig in and see, what do we need? We had some clear identifying concerns around bullying, we had some concerns around culture, we had some hiring things that needed to happen, and I think we kind of all knew that, and some of what you brought forward in your, in his, in your vision and goals to us, both at our retreat in the summer and then at the pub, at the meeting here, all of which were public meetings, I think, you know, I wanna be mindful of not giving like, you know, sort of a whole junket of items that we think should be happening, and really let you kind of, so to speak, diagnose the patient and move forward with a plan. And I, I feel like a lot of that work's been do, going on, and you have a number of, and some of it comes up in Subcommittee meetings, we had some presentations, which I'll talk about when it's time to talk about Subcommittees, about the important initiatives around a number of different things, and our faculty is working on a lot of that, and our, and our administrators. And you've, I think, reported out to us, thank you, in our weekly update about what's happening, so, and if you wanna address some of that.
Yeah, please. I, I appreciate that, Kim. And, and so, I had that opportunity, because as part of my entry plan, I met with every single one of you and spoke about priorities. So, you didn't have the same opportunity that, that I had, so I do, you know, and I recognize that, and it's a priority thing, so, you know, sort of cart and horse, right? But I, I own putting the ADL work in front, my thinking being that it was going to be not only a priority for our district, but it's a movement that we can see across the whole Commonwealth, right? And so, to, and, and, and as committee members, some folks are very conversant, and, and others haven't had that same opportunity. So, to bring up that level of, of mutual understanding, then move into our priorities, my thinking is that maybe those priorities might be a little different, recognizing that education that we got from, but could it have done more simultaneously? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think, I think both are just.
No, I, no, I appreciate, and I, I appreciate that, and I own the, you know, whether the, whether, you know, it was cart or horse, I own the, the way it was set up.
And I'm not, there, there's no criticism here at all, 'cause I think that like that work was very important, and I felt like it needed to be done. I didn't know maybe after that, or, you know, a week later or something, you know? I, 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 I kinda felt like we came to this table as, you know, as three new school committee members with no background whatsoever, no background whatsoever. So, some type of feedback input would've been, it would've been nice to be able to talk to you guys.
Well, yeah, no, I think you're bringing up a very good point.
It would've been nice.
I mean, I noticed that when I came on, there's really no sort of, you know, quote-unquote indoctrination period. You know, you don't, you don't know how it works, you don't know what the language is, you don't know what the resources are and where to get them. I mean, you may not know what DESI is, and you may not know, you know, what it all stands for, and, and how to get on the school committee website. And, you know, there, there is absolutely, I think, a hole in, in, or an oversight perhaps, that, that we could improve upon for, for any new member. Yeah, for sure.
And, and, and I don't know that perhaps I was, learning myself, right, was in that place, but the, but the next time there were new members, I certainly can.
And, and I'm not even sure that's your bailiwick. I, I really don't.
I don't think that's on you.
No, not at all. That's a school committee. That's, that's a school committee, that's a school committee issue.
And I'd even like to, I mean, take it a step further, I think developing an onboarding process for new school committee members is much needed. You know, when the three of us were elected, gosh, coming up on three years, same thing kind of, right, but there were so many issues going on, it was like, welcome to school committee 101.
Baptism, I thought.
Immediately. But I think having, you know, more, a more of a solid, formal onboarding process, which may mean the new members, you know, pair up with an existing member, that's something that can be done fairly easily, and in future years, we could avoid this.
And, you know, and maybe, and maybe one of the, maybe one of the Subcommittee's could.
Or even, you know, Megan and I as Chair, Vice Chair with you, could think about, and just get everybody's input, about what do you need. I think that makes total sense. I met with a few of you, so I, I met with a few people, and I thought I was kind of giving the lay of the land and giving at least my point of view at that point, and we were kind of taking over from Bob, who'd been Chair for a long time. So, I'm, I try to say, I'm always available if you have questions or things, but I think you're right, I think we can be a little bit more formal about it, you know, matching up with what's going on. There was a lot happening at the end of last year, so.
Onboarding with more intentionality.
I really appreciate that feedback, yeah.
I just wanna comment on the, on the workshop format. If I'm hearing correctly, we're talking about bringing people in to talk to us, is that a workshop format? I don't know what it is.
Well, I mean, not necessarily. I think a workshop format can, can be lots of different things. It's sort of like, typically when you have a meeting like this, it's a more like, we go straight down the agenda, people get up, they present, as opposed to maybe, you know, working on a policy or working on an issue, or having a chance to kind of have an open dialogue. Every single time we meet as a body of seven, it is in fact an open meeting, you know, but sometimes we just meet in a way where we're gonna literally go through a document, maybe we've had a chance to read it ahead of time, and we're gonna work on it. But sometimes I do think having an outside person to come in, if it's an issue. So, for example, some of what's being talked about is cell phone policy. There are potentially some proposed, we're, we're waiting sort of at any minute for our commissioner to promulgate or send out a proposed policy. How are we gonna work through that? Some of that will end up in a Subcommittee workshop, some of it will then also maybe come to the full committee, well, gee, the Subcommittee's looked at it, this is what we found, here we wanna engage all of you, because it has to be voted on. It's, if it's a major change from anything we've done, it'd be important to dig into it. There's, you know, other policies that come that we have to work on, and I think an opportunity to work with it, whether we need to have somebody as a guest to answer questions, for example, somebody from the administration, or somebody as a presenter to give us some ideas and thoughts, and it depends on what the topic is. And I do think we could, when planning our meetings for next year, we can do some, every other, we can do, I know, for example, I've mentioned in the past, that at the budget presentations, we often have an opportunity to hear from different departments of the school about things they'd like to see happen, especially if the budget's gonna be on one particular topic remarkably different than it's been in the past, right? We had a pretty lengthy discussion last year about the issue of a middle school interventionist, right? And again, that was coming from a couple of different leaders, and we had a lot of questions, and that would be a perfect example of something that might be, you know, appropriate at a workshop model, because we can kind of just dig in and ask a lot of questions. But I would want us to have people here, if those are the people that have the information we need. Obviously, that would have to be planned, so, that would be an example.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just kinda feel that if we're going to be bringing someone in, that it, it's gotta be a topic that the entire committee feels is, is, is the time needed to, to, you know, the, the time allocated to that, to bringing someone in. I, I think the committee really has to I I think the committee really has to decide, is there a need to bring someone in? And do they have specific questions that they cannot answer on their own and that they will benefit from having someone in? Because o- otherwise, like, I look at to someone like, something like today, I got Monday allocated, I mean, I got Monday allocated for who knows how much time, but to find another day on my calendar, not that, you know, I know I've got such a busy calendar, but to find another day, there there's already considerations, uh, you know, there are already other considerations. So I would like, I would hope that we should, would consider um utilizing our existing scheduled time as fully as possible rather than having to find another time in in my schedule. Because I know what these times are going forward and I can make accommodation for them beforehand.
Well, and I guess, and and this may be yours, but I hadn't asked my question about about sort of workshop versus regular meeting. I understand the distinction between sort of moving through an agenda and making motions and so forth versus a free flowing workshop type conversation. My understanding is there are no rules that say it must be one or must be another. In other words, the second bullet in new business tonight could have been workshop discussion about mission and values, right? And we could have said, okay, no motions, no whatever, now we're here, now we're having the conversation. And right, so like, there's no, there's no, there's no special categorization of one versus the other that says we, these two shall, these two shall not cross, right?
Right.
Okay, so then, yeah, I would just echo David's point, I mean, in some sense, I feel like most of what we do in our meetings is a free flowing conversation. We have points where we have to move to a formal process, but beyond that, I feel like we're here in the room discussing the issues of of concern, so I would, to David's point, I'd love to see us use that time to cover the things we feel like we need to, and and if that means bringing someone in, that's that's fine as well. Um, but, you know, I, in terms of when the next one would be, you know, I don't know what else we have on the agenda for November 13th, but I'd rather have us know going in, all right, we're also blocking off 90 minutes on the evening of November 13th to talk X, and I think, you know, that was in the spirit of, you know, when I'd asked if we could discuss priorities at this meeting, that my thought had been, great, here's a chance for us to, people could be prepared and come and bring that and saying, it feels like that's now sort of pushed to an indeterminate point in the future, so to, just to to the extent that we can use, and, you know, hindsight's 2020, for the meetings have already gone past, but to the extent that we can use these meetings to cover whatever it is we think the school committee needs to cover, I think that would, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, going off of what Orin said, I also think that that itself to bringing in experts if need be.
You know, the kind of discussions that we're going to have, we could say, okay, we have some real questions, you know, regarding X, Y, and Z. And maybe we need to have somebody, you know, present on this level so we're more informed and can make, you know, a better decision.
I think again, I don't know if you want to join in.
My, yeah, my, no, my only thought is that uh this would be if if the committee is setting up its whatever, its priorities or its core values and that seems to me that it would lend itself more toward a retreat. It would be more of a a free flowing conversation where you'd be able to perhaps dig um a little deeper and come out of it with a unified understanding of what what consensus is. But um, you know, and and the other, you know, the other piece to, I think to Megan's point is that um you know, can can this be done independently? Yes, but if you have an expert in the mass association of school committees who works with dozens and dozens of school committees and has for years, there's, there's a, there's a resource to be able to help guide those, to guide those conversations.
If I'm hearing Orin correctly, I just, for, to clarify, it's not so much about whether or not, you know, we could, we could do this workshop in this setting and still have somebody like Liz LaFond come in.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I mean, I'm not to be pedantic about it, but what makes something a workshop? Is it that we close the circle? Is it that we're not in this room, we're in a different room?
Do, for the retreats that we've had so far, it's, um, I think it's, it's very, very different, it isn't necessarily a um a chair recognizing somebody who speaks and comes back and there's a vote and and it's a.
But we don't, I, again, I'm not, we don't do.
Chair recognize the person, I mean, this, right, like, here, have we convert, we've sort of moved into workshop mode here, right? And so that is how most of, and and that's not extraordinary, that's how most conversations on this committee go.
Yeah, well, I I would say that the retreat was a, is a, the retreats we've had have been a very different feeling from from this. Right, I think there's, uh, and and it's really, again, it it comes down to what the, you know, how the committee wants to operate and what they, what they want to do. Uh, I would think that digging into, um, digging into priorities, individuals' priorities and and having that might lend itself, in my mind, would lend itself more toward a retreat or a workshop, but that's just, you know, that's that's my thinking, doesn't mean it's the way that would work best for.
And although it, it's what I, it certainly could have, it could have been scheduled for tonight. I want to remind everyone that we have actually had, we had our last retreat, we had some open time, we were waiting for our food, it was a little, and I, we, from our meeting with Phil, we had this idea of, you know, the dream of what Lennox looks like, right? So that could have been a visioning. Now, whether people were prepared to really think about that in that terms, but we left it that way, we said, all right, well, let's think about what it's going to look like and let's, I thought we had a collective decision and that we were going to move toward the idea of a vision for what it would be like for Lennox to be the space that we want it to be. And having not addressed our mission, no one in this particular group, I think, was even part of the school committee at the time the mission was last written, um, having some specific things where we've had to make decisions in leaderships and and how we've allocated things based upon mission, core values, et cetera, but this group has not actually addressed it. When we had our planning meeting, which included Dr. Collins, Megan and me, we said, well, if, how are we going to decide on priorities if we don't even really have a consensus or a collective view of what our mission and our vision is? We have goals that have come from our leader, our superintendent, as well as each of our buildings, coming from really great administrators who've been digging in and each of whom are somewhat new in their roles in Lennox. It just seems to make sense, one runs from the other, and that's why we put it in that place because one person's priorities, if it doesn't fit with a collective idea of mission, core values, et cetera, we are a committee of seven, we are not a, any one of us a committee of one, and all of our voices should be heard. I've expressed my commitment to that before. And when we had an opportunity to hear your vision and goals and your entry plan, I think you presented once, we had a chance to, people that reached out to you did, and then we had a chance to vote on those and talk about those, and I think you're digging into that and you've identified that by February, you're hoping to update and let us know how you're doing, so. Sorry, everybody, but I feel like this is coming in timely as we're moving forward. If everybody had a different timeline, then, you know, we're we're doing, we've got each of our subcommittees working now and digging into some items and so hopefully we will, we'll feel like your, your, all of your time is being used well. Um, and we will get that planned and if it's, if if our people that can come, can come November 13th, there's no reason we can't do it then. Again, oftentimes at our business meetings, our administrative staff tries to be here, they go to, they go to work at six or seven in the morning and they're often here late, so I think it'd be great to identify who needs to be here and who doesn't so that we're using their time wisely as well, and I will keep that in mind. Is the budget forecast, yeah, so we do have that already on there.
And they're, yeah.
Oh, yes, the MCAS data, and again, that wasn't quite ready, I think that there was a, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that in our initial scheduling, that was what we were thinking would be happening tonight. And, you know, our our team needs to take this, I think we've got some really great people doing work on data and understanding what does MCAS mean, what do these numbers mean for us in Lennox and doing some comparison, and they've asked for time to do their work. And I think, again, we set out the schedule a year ahead of time, but we also have to move with a a really hardworking administrative team who's doing their work, so that would have been on our schedule for tonight.
I'd just like to say that that's two items now that have been pushed back. And I I I would hope that we can make the effort, that the team can make the effort a- as as much as possible to stick to the schedule. You know, the schedule's out there, it's been out there for a long time, and I just, I, everything just, not everything, but I would prefer things do not keep getting bushed.
I can certainly speak to the MCAS, when when the admin met in the, for for our summer retreat, the principals looked at the schedule and said, lucky, based on the timing when we're going to get the, when we're going to get the results, um, could we, would you be willing to ask the committee if we could um present at the next meeting? And and so a- as soon as that was communicated to me, I communicated it to you all, but I, so it isn't, it's not a surprise, right? But at the same time, I think that, um, you know, in my estimation, what they wanted to do was be in a position to have analyzed this enough to be able to answer any questions and have delved in and um, and I'm not sure exactly why it fell, when it fell, and if there wasn't a compelling reason, pushing it back seemed to to me that you'd get a more meaningful conversation.
And I think that we have now the leadership team that will be helping to develop the schedule for next year. So, you know, MCAS, I don't know if they have a fixed date every year that they come out. Um, we had a hiatus on MCAS for a period of time, so I think that as we project for next year and do our meetings, we'll try to have better forecasting about exactly how that's going to work. I will definitely don't want any of our team, our admin team, to hear this and think that in some way we're suggesting that they're not working diligently on all of it. There's a lot of data work happening, including the things that had not happened in the past, including academic rounds, going into classrooms, you've been in classrooms a lot trying to see what's going on, so I think there's there's both the hard data analysis from MCAS, but then there's also what is actually happening in our schools and how our students are doing, so. You know, I I think that's a lot of information that's really helpful as we figure out, you know, where to move things forward and I don't, I don't want to suggest that in any way that our administrative team is not working really hard on a lot of different initiatives, we have a number of things happening that they're working really hard on. So, thank you. Okay, so we have subcommittees, um, Megan, Governance and Leadership?
Sure, so, um, we had our, excuse me, we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago and we have Liz LaFond present, I think I we had a meeting in between there somewhere. Um, basically, it was kind of a opportunity to bring some of, you know, the issues that are important to us as subcommittee members to the table. Um, Dave did a great job with kind of coming prepared with Alyssa, ended up kind of becoming our agenda and it worked out well, I think. Um, we had Liz LaFond there, which was very helpful, she can, you know, she's obviously in tune with what's going on in other districts and how other districts are handling things, so, um, I think she's a very valuable resource that I will, you know, plan on inviting her to future meetings as well. Um, so we have three uh sections left of policy and those are, if I can find them. G, I, and J, um, so as we've mentioned, these are three policies that we kind of held off up on purpose so that Dr. Collins had some input and time to look over it. Section G is personnel, section I is instruction, and section J is students. So all topics that really need, um, you know, administrative oversight. And uh we will be meeting, I'll send an email out shortly to set up another meeting and we will get working on section G. And thank you, Orin, for taking one off of there for me, done.
We changed a, well, we changed two numbers, we changed a five and a zero to a seven and a five.
Good to know.
Uh, HR is meeting tomorrow, uh, I think the main topic will be really almost preliminary to the budget, talking about um, particularly from as Dr. Collins is planning for what is upcoming, what what the staffing element of that might be. Uh, and then also something, it goes a little bit to Dave's question earlier about policies, but I think HR is where the sort of process piece has been since Dr. Eberwine's era, long ago in the Dr. Eberwine administration on the to do list, and so I think we'll try to make sure we have a plan for moving that forward.
And there might be some overlap, you know, with with these three sections of policy with HR, so we'll work together in the future.
Process, not policy, I mean, there is overlap, but what we have in mind is the, okay, there's a job opening. Where do you go? Who has, you know, is the job description up to date? Is the, where do resumes get sent, that kind of stuff.
And that was identified last year, thank you for that, because I think there's a number of ways in which HR has dug in to kind of get clarity around those things, so I really appreciate, again, appreciate the work in the subcommittee level. Um, Teaching, Learning and Culture, we bet on the 16th. Um, we had opportunity to have Dr. Jeremiah Ames, you know, our principal, talk to us about a number of things that he's been working on, including trying to, you know, deal with the cell phone issues and the concerns about cell phone. And also, um, we we had a chance to ask some questions and I think we, you know, digging into a few things and then also to give um, some ideas to Dr. Collins about the um, the climate survey. I think also in our upcoming meetings, the climate survey, when we get the results, will give us some more areas, I think, to dig in and really to prioritize at the um, subcommittee level. And um, yeah, I think that, I think that, you know, there were a number of things we identified, I put down for our next agenda to talk about um, community resources, honor code, um, you know, a number of other issues, and we'll be meeting on November 16th.
The cell phone issue is is the current state of play that that Jeremiah is working to implement, the policy that has been on the books, but of varying implementation as opposed to anything that might change in the policy itself.
Right, um, in the, in the summer, both at the um, school administrators conference and the superintendents conference, the commissioner of education said, we understand that districts are wrestling this, we're going to have some guidance that's going to come out. Um, stay tuned, and so my advice to Jeremiah was, hold tight, enforce what you have. Um, if you, if you, don't, don't change the spirit of it, but if you need to, I think they, they, they tweaked something from saying cellphone to electronic device or, but, uh, because we're going to get guidance and what we don't want to do is, we don't want to zig and then have the state's guidance have us zag, and so. But um, the expectation, the thought was that this was forthcoming and, you know, we're reaching the end of October and it hasn't, it hasn't come out yet, so at some point we might just go ahead on our, you know, go ahead on our own and and look at what is best for us, but uh what I can report and what uh Dr. Ames reported out to the TLC committee was this has gone way better than anticipated and the week that he reported to us, there were just three cellphone incidents. Right, that's, that's very impressive.
So focusing on consist, like, clear verbalization about what we're doing, clear people complying and doing it in the way that makes sense and some in- input from faculty and staff and everyone and that, he he described that it's working well, so, um, that's, that's good to know, too, right? Because there are some other schools, I think, that are doing lots of different things, but, um, that they're working on setting expectations, so. Thank you for that, um, and yeah, I think I said our next meeting is November 16th. And Finance?
Uh, Finance will meet on November 6th, which is a week before our meeting, and so that'll be, I expect.
So we'll not have everything for the 13th ready at that point, but that will be a chance for us to get an update and provide any input that might be helpful, uh, and I think you also said we'll, we'll review the first quarter.
Yes, and so we can bring that to the meeting too.
Yeah, and and cover that.
Expenditures for this current project.
Yeah.
And School Building, you have, we have sort of the two parts of that, do you want to address both of those?
Sure.
The larger one and the smaller.
So I was not at the first meeting, I had COVID, family had COVID, so I believe you.
Yeah, if you want me to.
Do you want to kind of summarize on how the meeting, the meeting went and then I'll talk about moving forward?
So we have a building subcommittee of the, that's of this, which is the three of you.
And then there's the bigger committee, which is the MS.
Well, there is the town committee also. And then there's the MSBA.
Yeah.
So it was a meeting to get together. We have submitted an application for MSBA. Bob Vaughn is the chair, kind of walked us through that, what the policies are, what the procedure is, what the likelihood of getting picked up in this cycle will, will be. That will be determined. I think Melissa even said that they make a determination on that somewhere around the end of October. So right now, we've kind of just got the, the table set, but we're wondering who's going to show up to dinner.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And that's a.
And one other thing that we're going to review for the capital, the capital budget.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, it's going to be a review, just to try to set priorities.
Yep, there's a list of priorities that were outlined in the application that Bob Vaughn also brought up and addressed. And he asked that also Dr. Collins and Jeremiah and different members of the administration and faculty also kind of take a, you know, a, you know, a look around to bring their opinions to the table, to see about what projects we may be tackling in the near future, regardless of whatever happens with the MSBA.
Yeah, right, because some of our neighbors, it has taken over a decade of them submitting to have accepted. And we wouldn't want to be in a position where we weren't moving forward with capital projects to keep the school up to date and functioning.
Great, thank you. Okay. I think I will just make two further announcements, just a reminder. And I know it's a little bit hard because there are some of us going to the conference on the Cape. And that begins on November 8th. On November 7th is the countywide professional development. I think this might be the first year that Lennox has been as robustly involved in it. I, if you look at the, the list of offerings, there's really quite a lot of, whether it's inter, interdepartmental with different schools. If you want to give a quick address about what's happening. And that, and thank you, because I think we've been invited to participate, which gives us a chance to, some things I think wouldn't really be relevant to school committee, but we've been invited to participate.
Yeah, and they have over 1,300 educators from across the county. The keynote speaker's going to be in the, keynote speaker's going to be in the, in the Duffin. And then they're going to simulcast it out to other schools around the county. So depending on what their, people sign up for, really, an AM and a PM that day workshop. And depending on where you're going to be and taking that workshop, you could be anywhere in the county. So I, I think, again, there were 54 offerings or something like that, right?
Really great.
Yeah, and a number of them are going to happen at the, a number of them are going to happen at the middle high school. And two of them, I believe, are going to happen at Morris. But there are the schools around the county. So it, it is an opportunity for teachers from various schools to, to be able to be in, be in the room together and not only learn, but to be able to interact and see what other folks are doing. I think oftentimes, people get as much out of, out of that job-alike experience, you know, as, as they get out of whatever the topic is being presented on.
Some, there's some really great, really, really great topics. I was very impressed. And I picked a couple, but I know people also work full-time jobs and have other things. So I know everybody won't be able to go, but may, maybe even perhaps the opportunity to see if the, if the keynote gets recorded, we'll have a chance to maybe look at it later. I think that would be really great.
And then. Is this being broadcast, or on broadcast? It's available remotely at live.
I was just thinking, for some people, if they're at work, they might not be able to do that, but maybe they'll have a chance to look at it later, hopefully. We'll see. Certainly, I think Burke 12 has done a lot to try to get, just a lot of, really a lot of work and thought.
If it turns out that it is recorded, I will, I will send out the link.
Yeah, that'd be great. And for those of us going to the conference, I'll send out an email too. I was thinking that if we could decide, there's four of us, I think, going, what we want to participate in and try to do different things. And we can connect back and maybe have an opportunity to share with the whole committee at one of our meetings about what we learned, what we found out. And try not to go to the same things, but hey, we might just really want to be in the same meeting for one of them and we'll, we'll do that. So I'll, I'll share an email, maybe a Google Doc where we can put in what we picked out. I started to look and then didn't really make my decisions. But things go fast at that conference too, but there's really a lot of great information, so.
Who's going?
What's that?
Who's going?
Kim, Kim, Megan, and me, and Dr. Collins. And you do, do a different one, right? You don't go to this one. Yeah. And Amy, are you coming too? Yes. So great, thank you. It's a lot of really good work. I really appreciate it. Anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, everybody.